Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Twelton City Council Work Session for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And first up tonight, we have Metro Transfer Regional Transportation Plan Public Comment Period Discussion, and I believe Mr. McCarthy is headed up here.
Good evening. My name is Mike McCarthy, and I work for the city as a city engineer. And I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Metro Regional Transportation Plan. And it's open now for public comment. And this is the website cover page for it. What we'll be talking about tonight is I'll try to just give a quick overview of the plan and what it includes, and what types of things and policies are in there. And then the planning context, some of the various other state agencies and rules that affect what can be in the plan and how the plan then affects what we in the counties do. Some of the key policy proposals that are in the plan, and then, of course, you know, please feel free to ask questions as they come up. And then at the end, as it's open for public comment, the question will be, do we submit public comments? And if so, what issues do we want to mention? So the Regional Transportation Plan, or RTP, as it gets called, is the twenty-year vision for transportation in the region. And it's federally required to be updated every five years. So if the plan is not updated, federal funds will not flow to the region. So there's a lot of pressure to get it updated, and the update is now due in December. The regional transportation plan is also governed by a lot of different state regulations implemented through Department of Land Conservation Development, particularly like the Transportation Planning Rule Goal twelve, and the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Ruling, also known as CFECC, and many others. And the current draft is five hundred seventy-three pages long, and there's really a lot of good hard work that's gone into so many parts of this plan and draft. And comments are due by August twenty-fifth, so hence we are talking to you now. The regional context, this is kind of a Venn diagram of sort of the different agencies and planning and what works and how. The state, you know, overall is bigger. So there's a lot of statewide rules that dictate or try to dictate what goes into transportation plans for metro and the many other planning jurisdictions around the state. And then in red is sort of what we're talking about tonight is the Metro Regional Transportation Plan and how that fits in. And then Washington County and Clackamas County are both making their plans, but you know, part of each county is in the region, part of it's out of the region. And then we as Twelton fit within the region, and then mostly Washington, some in Clackamas. So our plans have to dovetail with the county plans, which then have to work together with the regional plan, which then has to meet the state rules. So there's a lot of different interplay in what goes where. And this is the website for public comment. And we encourage as many Twelton people as possible to go to this website. And you don't have to understand all five hundred seventy-three pages. But please enter your comments and particularly write in what's important to you. And what do you really care about in terms of transportation in the next twenty years? And there are a number of other groups that are really mobilizing a lot of their people to communicate their perspective. And we want to make sure that Twelton's voices are well heard in this whole process. So I think maybe I can work with some others to get this out to some more city groups for comment. The RTP, the policy is based on five policy goals. So they like a lot of these diagrams to kind of show how things work together. The five goals are mobility options, a safe system, equitable transportation, thriving economy, and climate action and resilience. Now, what do all those mean? Because they're all good sounding terms. And I think it's kind of one of those along the lines of like beauties in the eye of the beholder. Because I think a lot of people have their own ideas and definitions of what each of these means. And that's, you know, how we get into five hundred seventy-three pages. It's based around the Metro twenty forty growth concept, which you've probably seen over the years, and most of it's been consistent, where, you know, the darker areas are denser development. The purple areas are more, you know, industrial and employment areas. And it's how do we have a transportation network that continues to support each of these areas and the uses that are planned in those areas? And then one of the big questions is what's in the RTP or Regional Transportation Plan? Some of the key projects include Southwest Corridor Light Rail, the improvements on I two oh five, like the replacement Abernathy Bridge, and the widening project is in there. And there is an improvement on I five south right at the Boone Bridge, which is just south of Wilsonville, for some help there to get traffic moving across the little limit there. It also includes things like a corridor study along Highway ninety-nine through Tigerd, Twalton, Sherwood, and what should that road look like? Includes planning for high-capacity transit. And where are we looking particularly if like new light rail lines or new rapid bus lines? Does include regional trails as well. So for us, it includes the Ice Age Tonkin Trail and a number of projects in that area, and particularly regional connections that people could use to walk or bike, like say to an employer in the next city over or even, you know, ten or twenty miles across the region. A lot of emphasis on what they call TSMO, which is an acronym for Transportation System Management and Operations, which is basically using technology to help the transportation system work better. And many other projects, we've, you know, submitted our own list of a few dozen projects around Twelton that are included in part of this. But that inclusion is really more for illustrative and modeling purposes. And if we're using our own money, we can build our own projects typically as long as they don't violate any of the big particular rules. But for anything federally funded has to be in the RTP in order to get federal funds. Any questions so far?
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
It just, it sticks out to me that the I two oh five widening is on there, but I know it's not on ODOT's list, so what does that do? And what does that do for planning of traffic flow in the future?
Well, this is a twenty-year plan. And I think with ODOT's recent changes, it's getting pushed farther out in the timeframe. So I think ODOT is still intending to build that at some point. They just don't know how they're going to fund it. Some of the basic philosophy in the plan, they really build it around kind of the main idea that they use a lot of is to avoid building more roadway capacity. And to consider tolling or other measures to make more what they call efficient use of the roadway system before they look at widening, investing more in walking, biking, transit routes, light rail, things like that. And it's, a lot of this is built around the theory that if traffic gets worse, people will switch to other modes. Whether that's practical or not, some have different opinions. Some of the key proposals, tolling is included and assumed as part of this regional transportation plan. And it's tolling on all of I five and all of I two oh five through the metro region. The gap here is just because that part, they're assuming would already be implemented with the I two oh five toll project. That may be changing for the final draft. They might just make it a solid line all the way across. But they're assuming a pretty significant tolls on both I five and I two oh five through the whole metro region. And the second bullet, I think, might be even bigger. They advanced two options for where the revenue could go. And one is to fund transit. So the toll revenue would go to fund transit. And then the other option is the toll revenue would go to fund projects to benefit walking, biking, and TSMO, the System Management and Operations, and basically ways to try to get people out of their cars. So they're assuming that the tolling doesn't actually go to fund projects to improve the roads.
I have a question. Sure. And a comment just because it's right on the topic. So I stood in for the mayor today at the Washington County Corating Committee,
Yeah.
which they touched on all these subjects here before us right now on the twenty-year plan. One thing that was made clear is that our cities are not planning appropriately street traffic. And if I read this correctly here, is that that has been encouraged, is that correct? Based on moving the funds from transportation to roads and pathways and public transportation, that's what I saw here a couple of times. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow what the question was.
So the question is, why are we wanting to not fund roads and then fund other alternative ways of roads when in today's meeting I stood in, that was a huge concern. With economic development, we have businesses who want to come here, but are afraid that the workforce to get to the jobs will take more than twenty-five minutes, which is not a positive, it's not positive. In here, I just saw that slide that says that they're looking to shift revenues outside of trans, building, expanding roads and highways. Why?
I think that's a good question and a good thing to comment on.
And we just got done doing some land develop, land decisions on zoning because of traffic to all tens major arteries on traffic. And how does that affect our future development when right now, again, they're not wanting to invest in widening roads and improvements when it will affect Waluton's long-term plan on traffic? You know, we had that Norwood situation where traffic was a huge issue. And now here again, we're not wanting to fund roads. So I'm just curious what the inspiration around that is.
Yeah, I share a similar concern that you know, maybe in the downtown Portland area, the roadway networks are built out well enough that there are enough other streets to absorb the extra traffic or the extra growth. Whereas we don't have that here. And many other cities like us around the region have similar issues. Where it's, you know, you can't just tell traffic to go somewhere else. And it's maybe not so practical for people to just walk or bike or hop on the transit, particularly when there's one bus that comes once an hour that doesn't go where you want to go.
Counselor Gonzalez. Michael, if you'll go back one slide. Yeah, so that is not our basic philosophy, the city of Twaltons. That's the regional transportation plan that Metro is putting together. And so I, based on your comment, like, I think that we should probably capture that and include it in our comments of, I mean, that this is a not Twalton's philosophy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Pratt. To dovetail, I think, and to add to that conversation, part of the thing that gets to me is that we work really hard for to do the development that we're talking about through meeting the goals for Metro around housing and commercial workforce spaces. We do not have a grid system here like they do have in downtown Portland, so there, there's a thing with the grid system that you can offset, and that's where that's on cross-town traffic comes from, but there's more opportunities to offset. So between, and we've said it many times, but as far as capturing in comments between those realities of our roadway system, our willingness to work with them on the development plan for building and then not having the roads to support, especially clean vehicles. And then finally, having diverted traffic from tolling that affects people disproportionately that have different economic, so it's economic divide. My other thing is wondering from my own perspective, and I'm interested what other people think, is in some ways, it seems like our freeway system is going to be great for maybe interstate trucks. But for the people that live here, you know, it's going to be hard to get on and off. Just going to the grocery store, I jump on the freeway a lot of times, as I'm sure everybody else. So I just think I'm kind of shocked that we would raise money that I've always thought were going for transportation improvements that wouldn't go for transportation improvements and would go towards a really inconsistent public transportation system that we have here. And finally, we have a bigger public transportation system that doesn't work in extreme heat and some other issues. So there's interruptions of service for different various reasons currently that there's already problems with.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to keep on this topic, but just a couple of comments. I, I agree with the comments that this is not, can't be our philosophy. And one thing that comes to mind is I mean, how bad it would have to get in order to, for the people of Twalton who don't work in Twalton to have to consider bike riding or public transportation as a consistent basis to get to and from work. Because for me, I think about like those who work in Hillsborough or Beaverton, so it'd be interesting. And I'm, and I don't know if this is, would be a good exercise or one that's appropriate for this. But one thing that comes to mind to me is like, how long would it take somebody to get to, you know, their places of business if it was on the east side? Hillsborough, Beaverton, just to consider the quality of life of people living in Twalton if it took them two hours of public transportation even to get to work both ways. And so traffic would have to get pretty darn bad for them to, to consider that. So it's like, how far are we pushing people to say this would be the, the alternate option? And just considering the quality of life of people if they have to spend two hours, you know, the majority of people to and from. And it would seem, I guess, better to first have a transportation system that works better than using car to begin with. And then that way, that, I think that would then encourage more people to take public transportation versus driving. But I don't think that, I feel like you're kind of doing it backwards to say, let's make it really bad so people have to do these things versus let's create a system that works for everybody. So that is the better solution.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
And I agree with every comment that's being said here. I also feel like it says if traffic gets worse, more people will switch to walk, bike, transit, or we'll lose them. They'll set their home and leave too closer, work closer to if they work in Hillsborough. You're going to go and live in Hillsborough or go down south. And which means more businesses might not, might consider other locations than us. So I also feel like it may not just be, oh, I'm going to walk. I'm just, you know, it takes me two hour, hours to get to my job. I'm just going to move in that area. So my property here moved somewhere else. That's another things that we need to consider as we plan the five-year or update our plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Brooks.
I send one more with that. When we're talking about things being more environmentally efficient to have traffic just stuck on the roads all throughout our city, all next to our, our schools, our homes, that to me doesn't sound anything like being environmentally responsible. There's greener methods of privately owned transportation happening and anything just sitting there off-putting isn't helping the environment, in my opinion. And this is just going to create clusters of areas that are going to be more have more of an environmental load actually from the congestion.
Yeah, Hillsborough actually commissioned a study of emissions compared to how fast the freeway was moving. And it was astounding the difference. When the freeway is moving well, emissions were quite low, or you think of your fuel consumption. And then when you're in stop and go traffic, burning twice as much fuel, it's pumping out twice or more of the emissions.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll close with one other takeaway from today's meeting earlier today was that the Urban Growth Region Prosperity Report that highlighted
Yeah.
that Twalton is in this amazingly sweet spot for growth. For metals, trade diversity, semiconductor bioscience, we are in the sweet spot. Anything south of two seventeen is where companies are looking to move into and then, of course, build supporting housing and affordable housing, all those things. And so I, I guess as we move forward as Twalton and planning our roads, definitely have to consider that growth is coming. So, well, thank you.
Yeah, I think, thank you. There's a number of points.
Like, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, like, we, we know like what ninety-five percent of people that work here don't live here and vice versa. Ninety-five percent of us don't, that live here don't work here, the opposite way. So it's like, and honestly, the, I think our city's done such a good job of infrastructure for walking and biking, but it's just, it's kind of an equitable bowl to expect people, elderly people or other people to, like, I, you know, I used to ride the eighteen miles to work, but I don't do that anymore. You know, that's a big loop. And my question is on the tolling, does that mean they're not planning to use any of that money for the mitigation projects?
I think that's a very good question. And it's hard to know what they're really proposing. They've, they haven't been so forthright with it. Yeah, so I think the, we had a number of concerns about it. I think the whole if traffic gets bad enough, people will just shift. They've kind of followed that for about the past several years, maybe almost decade. And in that time, traffic's gotten worse and worse. And I think absent a few months during the pandemic, it's just kept getting worse. And yet the mode shift has actually gone backwards. There's been more people driving and less people walking and biking as traffic's gotten worse. And there's a lot of like, why?
Well, part of it, I can tell you is because as a biker, when there's lots of traffic, it's pretty scary.
Exactly, and that's
Portland's done a big thing about wondering why people aren't biking, and that's a big part of it. And from, like, if you work in Portland from here, there's no safe way to get that last little piece into downtown. Like, you can go Twiliger, and then there's that Sixth Avenue, you could go Barber and a lane comes in. You know, there's really no great way to even get there. So it's, to me, it's ridiculous to insist on that. And my other thing, this is just my own personal experience, but I've lived here since the late seventies and I don't see that in the next twenty years that our transportation out here, public transportation is going to be so great that we could really even be promoting that unless it changed dramatically. But triments come to us and they have a lot of conflicting things they need to take care of, like out in Forest Grove, they already have people waiting for buses. They want to increase frequency and, you know, I applaud them for like eighty-second and where they're really hitting the most needed areas, but I highly doubt that Twalton's going to be on that list of, and right now they've taken away our ninety-six direct route to downtown. There's no good route to, on the two oh five corridor. So I, I don't, I guess that's what we're all saying. It's like, how do we promote people taking public transportation when there isn't a good public transportation system to encourage people to use? Yeah, that's their books. That's the other thing I've been thinking about too, because I, I was attended one of those at one point, and they were talking about reducing the rail system and putting in more buses and off-shoulder lanes. And in my opinion, if you're going to raise money and widen roads, extending track while you're doing that, like if you're going to do a lane for buses to lay track while you're doing that. And then you have something built for an increasing population, but to have the scattershot service and expect people to use that or sit in traffic, and that's the plan, that doesn't sound like a very smart plan. And, you know, I, I don't mean to be, but it just sounds like a horrible plan. And I kind of go back again with the densification and us working so hard to comply with Metro's vision of growth for our communities and to have this, this building and clear cutting and building, 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 but no road infrastructure to go along with it. To me, even if it's just a matter of putting in things and laying track while you're doing it, if you're going to put a bus lane in, lay track and do what they did down in Seattle, up in Seattle, and then they had a system in place. And they couldn't kind of turn back from it. It was embedded in the plan, but was never that you're just supposed to sit in traffic to help save the environment.
Yeah. Well, I think I'm hearing a lot of consistency here. And I fully agree. I think the numbers have shown over the past several years, people haven't switched modes, they just switch routes. And they're cutting through more and, you know, maybe Google and Waze are helping with that. So it hits a lot of the concerns of what I'm coming up later as well. So with the tolling, a lot of what they're doing is based on a model of how well certain measures will advance the region towards its greenhouse gas emission production goals. And the models are kind of really based on a lot of guesses, but, you know, some educated guesses. But about this particular measure will move you eight percent towards your reduction goal. And maybe that comes from a different area, a different city that doesn't have the same kind of context. So that's one of our big concerns. That by including tolling as one of the key measures of getting to the greenhouse gas reduction goals, they're basically, we'll set it up so that if we wanted to change the RTP to take tolling out later, for example, we'd have to come up with something else that according to their model gives the same benefits. And that's, that concerns me to allow that to be adopted at this point.
Are they, are their models saying that tolling is going to actually reduce traffic? Because their models seem to show a lot of diversion, not really reduction from what I've seen.
Their models show that the freeway system working better with tolling.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. The freeway system, great, but like you implied earlier, we don't have like these, our roads aren't really designed for all the traffic. And to, if, to me, if you're, maybe I'm simplifying this, but like you were saying about keeping traffic moving, if you set everybody onto like Borland Road, for example, or Stafford Road, and they sit there and take longer, isn't that worse for every, the environment? And it's not really reducing traffic or traffic times?
Yep, that's one of my biggest concerns with this. Sure.
Also, did they, in when you're, when they're going through all this, I hear a lot of different things, but I don't hear about modes of transportation changing. And do they address besides the gas tax, do they address the fact that the climate? There's more climate consciousness in what people are purchasing and driving and what the goals of the car manufacturers are and
So it goes back to that diagram with the circles. And what they're, the way Metro and DLCD work this out is DLCD essentially gets to take the credit for shifts to things like electric vehicles and more efficient stuff. You know, Metro is focused on reducing home-based vehicle miles traveled per capita. And so the way that Metro did these calculations really doesn't include that shift. And that was one of the points that I brought up in the discussion, and I was rather incredulous about that they, like, you know, this is a big deal.
I'd like to see that included too.
Yeah.
Because we have federal guidelines and standards and I'm related to a few people that work in automotive, and I know that that's the end goal is that they're going to be producing either electric or hydrogen-fueled vehicles.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm writing down notes for things to include in our letter.
So I know we didn't get this out, the presentation out to you early, but we do have a few more slides that, that cover some of these other things. So I don't know if, if Mike could get through the presentation and you could, it may cover some of your comments.
Sure. I think we've hit in a number of staff concerns already.
Yeah.
One of the other key ones is they include high-capacity transit planning. And in other words, planning And in other words, planning for where the next light rail lines or bus rapid transit lines would go. And this is another one that I I've pushed back on pretty hard already. It's also based on their modeling. And their modeling just includes home-based trips within the region. And doesn't include trips into and out of the region when they're assessing demand. Some of the numbers from our transportation system plan update that we've pulled already. You know, of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand people in Tuolton. Uh, about thirteen thousand five hundred commute to work. Of our residents, about two thousand stay within Tuolton and about eleven thousand go outside of Tuolton. Meanwhile, about thirty thousand people a day live outside of Tuolton and commute into Tuolton for work. So, you know, we have a lot of jobs here. And eight thousand of those are coming from outside the metro region. Places like Canby, Woodburn, Salem, McMinnville, Newburgh. And I think that's a pretty significant demand. And there's similar percentages going to work even in downtown Portland. So if. High-capacity transit were available, say from Sherwood to Portland. That would be a great way to get a lot of vehicle miles traveled off the road. If someone could just hop on. Rapid bus train, get to downtown, not have to deal with a parking garage. But they seem to be missing that in their analysis, and that's one of our key points. So these are color-coded uh transit routes. And the the green is what they call tier one. And those are already planned for high-capacity transit, either um light rail or rapid bus. The blues are what they call tier two. And sorry, I couldn't make this big enough on the screen, but uh the blues are tier two, which is the next priority. And there's a whole lot of that in this particular east side area. Uh, the yellows are tier three, which is they're not going to start any sort of preliminary design work now, but maybe start setting the stage for it. And the orange is tier four, which is the lowest tier, which is kind of planned and sort of they'll get to it later. And our contention is, you know, if they had. Really considered all the traffic coming in from Newburgh and McMinnville, Highway ninety-nine would be showing up a whole lot higher on this. Um, so that's one thing I'd suggest we comment on. Um, I think similarly for the I five corridor. There's so much traffic coming from I five to try to get into and out of the region. Uh, you know, we see it every afternoon if you go across the Sagard Street overpass. So ninety-nine west are listed as tier four. Um, and our concern is is that that it's they're vastly underestimating the demand. And frankly, this pattern I'm seeing repeated throughout a lot of the decisions is things that. You know, not overtly, but the way that decisions are made tend to center things around central part of the region. And tend to keep the money in the central part of the region and away from the outer parts of the region. Uh, things like that, things like a safety analysis where injuries only count if a person's walking or riding a bike, but not if they're in a car. Things like that. But it's just a general pattern throughout. And then the regional mobility policy. This is a figure that Counselor Gonzalez probably saw earlier today. This is their policy that they're proposing. Is that freeways are considered to be functioning acceptably. If traffic moves on them at more than thirty-five miles an hour for twenty hours of the day. So up to four hours, they could be basically parking lots. And that would be considered acceptable. And that's four hours on average. It could be two or three Monday and Tuesday, three or four on Wednesday, and seven hours on Friday. Which I think is about what we're seeing in here on I five south. And if you notice. You know, the red and the blue are showing areas where they anticipate in twenty thirty. They call it the NB is no build, that they'll have capacity problems. And they're anticipating with no build, no new construction. And growth patterns continuing as they have, that I five will be functioning quote-unquote acceptably. Through Tuolton in twenty thirty. I disagree. Pretty strongly. And then the diversion, the freeway traffic on the city streets resulted in increasing crash rates. One of the numbers to use in some of your conversations, if you want. If a person diverts from a freeway onto a local street. They then have six times the rate of fatal or serious injury crashes. Because of the way they've diverted. And because on the freeway, basically the whole world is moving at sixty miles an hour. Whereas when you get off the freeway onto the local street, there's signals, crosswalks, driveways. And other places where crashes happen. And I believe the diversion factor is part of the reason why our region has seen such a big increase and serious crashes. So. You know, one could do some math and estimate. Those four hours of the day, if you take half the traffic off of the freeway and put it on a local street instead. Which is about what would happen, because about half the volume would get through. It would be an extra fifty-eight, I think, additional fatal or serious injury crashes a year, or like one a week. Which to me is just an astounding number. Which is why I believe in pushing back on this one, but. Also, in the regional mobility policy, they're so focused on reducing this home-based vehicle miles traveled, which is the number that they. Negotiated with the state DLCD that they have to work on. You know, rather than using the alternative vehicle, uh, electric vehicles standard. So. Part of the policy is that if a land use change is proposed. Particularly any kind of a big zoning or anything like that, it must not increase vehicle miles traveled per capita. The home-based vehicle miles traveled per capita. So one is it's home-based and doesn't consider longer commutes, like Counselor Reyes mentioned. What if people just get sick of all the traffic here on the weekend and decide to move farther out? And then commute in for their jobs. We're actually increasing our VMT. The other is, how do you add a new regional employer? Like, say, a big new chip fab without increasing VMT per capita, because they'll be drawing people from all over the region. So that's one that, you know, we're pushing on, you know, Hillsborough is also pushing on that one. Yes.
I am curious with this conversation um around what percentage is commercial traffic as well and how those numbers figure in. Not only for safety concerns, because if you have more trucks diverting and hitting pedestrians or whatever happens, that's or other cars, those are really. Horrible situations for our police to deal with and for our communities to be worried about, but also just. These employment lands with all the trucks and ways that we do commerce. Which comes from that verb, right? So um, I don't underst- I don't see what the. I don't, I haven't, I've seen a lot of these presentations, but I don't see a lot of. The projections around commercial vehicles and traffic. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, good question. I heard one that may have come up at the county coordinate committee also. The I five south corridor actually moves the most freight in the region. And it's almost a quarter billion a day in freight moving on the I five south corridor. I think it's two hundred twenty-five or two hundred thirty or so, which is, you know, significant. And then comments, concerns, other thoughts? Should we write a comment letter? I think I'd get the answer to that one. And issues that we should include in it, I've got. Fair amount of notes already. Any others that we should add that we haven't?
Yes, thank you. Um, they just say that um we have to update, update this every five years. And um, and this plan. Depends the funding that we get every time we update. That's how they determine how much funds. We're getting, I want to clarify that.
The connection to funding is, uh, in order for a project to get federal funding, it has to be in that valid updated regional transportation plan. So for a project to get into, to get federally funded, it has to be in the plan, and we have to keep plan updated, otherwise federal funding stops for regional projects.
And then the, my other question is, um. I, can we, and I think Counselor Gonzalez brought this up a little bit, and I I think I'm hearing it from. The funds, are there all for the um. I've, you know, the interstate or, you know, we, because. Would it will, it will benefit if we can like restore roads or maintenance our roads. And so is that something that we can add like? Into this comment, we would want funds of that to support our roads and mobility around our town as well.
Yeah, that's part of the com- again, like more investment in Tuolton.
And my other. As you were giving your presentation, there's this um. Eleven, I think it's your slide. I saw like a little caterpillar line. Is that the um, is that Tuol- yeah, is that the I five that you were, I just want to, just want to make sure I'm reading the map correctly. That you have that caterpillar style. I work at the zoo, so.
So the the caterpillar is the west corridor?
The west, okay, so it's not the I five. We're down here, I think.
No, the funding category is at a four.
Improvements to the west ca- so continuing the west corridor is kind of assumed. Uh, improvements to the west corridor would be a tier four. That would be things like going to fifteen-minute service or making it an all-day service. Things like that, like the kind of thing that really allow people to feel like they could depend on it a little more.
Sorry. So I think that's all I, I just wanted to make clarify those three things I wrote down and also that I do support a letter and.
So is the west corridor itself a tier four or is it higher up?
Improvements to the west corridor would be a tier four.
Okay, I think I mixed up with southwest corridor, the actual max line.
Okay.
Counselor Gonzalez?
So just to make sure I understand correctly, is this the place where we make recommendations? So for example. The new street one hundred and twenty-four that was built that connects us to the Coffee Creek Nursery onto Highway five. If we had wanted to build four lanes on each side or direction, could we have done that? And is this is a place where they would heed our our comments?
I think if. So like if we wanted to say, add a project to add a lane on that east direction hypothetically.
Yeah, it was built already, but if from the beginning, it was just, we want a four-lane road on each side, because we know that the future's coming, the houses are coming in twenty years. Could, is this the metro, this is the place where this is to be cited?
I think it would primarily come from our transportation plan or something on that level, and then also with the county's transportation plan. And then we would need to get it into the metro transportation plan for things like air quality modeling, and then if we wanted to go for federal funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Brooks.
Um, I just, I wanted to also um. Discuss our climate goals through our climate action plan to have multimodal transportation. Supports for EV charging and things that go along with the philosophy that we have that we think works. And um, and also support for the corridors that affect us, like the. Southwest corridor and the west. I think those things align with our climate action plan and address some of those climate concerns. But in a way that is actually practical and a way that um I see the people. Of Tuolton and the um commercial traffic and um, and I still. Think, I don't know how this happens, and I don't know how to include in a letter, but I don't understand how the building. Goals and the transportation goals are so divorced from each other. They're so disconnected and how we're supposed to. Go to our community as responsible leaders and put some of these things in front of them. As viable solutions. So I, the interconnectivity, and a nice way of putting that. Is something that I would like to see addressed, because I think we're good partners and we try really hard to work with Metro. But we have these limitations and you've done such a great job, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think one of the things I can see tone-wise with that is, you know, we support the goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We just want to make sure that the measures we're taking are actually going to work. And we support measures that work for that. We don't support measures that don't work and have other side effects.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree more. Like it's, to me, it's much more realistic to um. Use funds for EV charging stations and, you know, it's great to work towards public transportation, but. To be practical about it, that if we can get more people and. Electric vehicles and make it easy for them to use that, that's going to be the quickest impact to help the environment. I had a couple of questions. Oh, so when you submit, you talked about submitting projects to be in this RTP, but um. I I'm sure the projects that were considered, but like. Tolling came along in the middle of this, so how do you know what projects we might need for, because of tolling diversion?
That's a very good question. That's one of the issues that came up. So they asked us to submit projects about six months ago.
Right.
You know, before a lot of the tolling things happened, and the projects that we submitted. Uh, were basically kind of what's already been in our system plan and would have been on the books for years. And they didn't include projects that would just arise as needs because of diversion caused by tolls. And that's some of the points that we're making is. Those need to be added. And particularly if those are happening.
Yeah, and then back on your site, what we we talked about like a business coming into Tuolton, but if we. Say we changed the zoning like on single-family residential and made it higher density housing, we're not allowed to increase any VMT?
Um, well, it's VMT per capita.
Per capita, so, oh, okay, so since you have more.
Yeah.
Individuals living here, it might not be as big an issue.
Yeah, so that, you know, could work out okay.
It's the, if you had a business that attracts people to our town, would be more, much more difficult. That, okay, that makes sense to me. But my last question is, um. Does anything? And I don't know if it ties in with this or not, but there's a big concern about um. I'm not hearing from the state level or metro, any um, you know, the gas taxes got revenue sharing. And we get the twenty cents of the dollar, right? Well. Will there be any revenue sharing for our city? Because we're really at a loss if. I, we know the gas tax is going away and it's going to be replaced, but how do we get our share of that revenue that we've. Gotten in prior times? And how are we expected, you know, if I understand everybody's short of money for roads, but. It's really inequitable to not let the counties and the cities. Get part of the revenue sharing going forward in whatever form it is.
Yeah, I agree with that fully, and that's metro assumed it would basically go to Trimate or go to region-wide programs. So I think that's a point that we can raise is revenue needs to be shared.
Counselor Reyes.
Thank you. Um, when we share the link to the public, um. We just encourage them to uh, to just uh give their comments and um, and concerns through this link, and we don't really um. I mean, it just goes directly to that website, right, to the link. We don't have to like. Follow up on that, or do we have to follow up?
I I prefer to send them directly to the website.
My last question is if you have contacted the chamber to ask them to comment yet? If not, I can do that.
I'll, I'll pass that along. Uh, I think I've contacted some folks, but we can do more. But it's one more.
Oh, Counselor Sacco?
And just real quick on that, I mean, will you, will you, with five hundred and some odd pages, will you provide this document to them? I was thinking about if we're, we're asking for public to comment.
Yeah, this is a great.
I mean, is there, or is there any way to like boil this down for. Uh, people that don't have time to read five hundred and some odd pages to say. Maybe even say like, these are, these are maybe even the city, the city council, this is sort of the direction that are suggestions that we have. I don't know, because I think of it as a person. Yeah, if I were to go to this link and see, you know. This, this document, I might just. this, this document, I might just say, yeah, I, I don't have time for this. But if there was something that was sort of boiled down for me to make it more understandable and palatable, I'd probably be more apt to provide comments.
Yeah, I'd be glad to have this presentation available or the letter that we end up drafting for our comments, we can make available.
Can I, I think I'm wondering too if we um, can share the letter that we, that the city provides as well? Because that will probably have the highlights and then people can wait, weigh through that, that document as well.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, well, great. Thank you so much for reading the five hundred and seventy-three pages.
And thank you all for giving so much time. Thank you.
Yeah, and providing the letter of um, addressing your concerns and ours.
Thank you.
Is it, we could try to get through council communication, so I'll start with Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Um, so my first um, comment, sorry, I gotta put my notes. Um, so uh, we have been working on the idea committee interviews. Um, so just to let everybody know that, um, we had wonderful people that applied, of course. Um, and uh, I just want to thank everybody out there that did apply, um, and went through the interview process. Um, I think I described it as after the interview process, my cup field felt, was full, um, from just listening to um, everybody's lived experiences and the diverse community that we do have out there. Um, it, it just feels, feels really good, um, to be able to connect with so many people through that process. Second, I, I wanted to bring up that I met with um, uh, somebody from Northwest Cannabis Company, um, today, and they're interested in expanding our cannabis operation hours. Currently, it's from um, ten to eight, um, and they're interested in expanding um, that from eight to ten. Um, and for, for quite a few reasons, some that I wanted to highlight is, one is that um, we have uh, cannabis operations in cities nearby and cannabis facilities in um, cities nearby that operate from eight, eight to ten, and so they're losing um, business to those other cities. And um, since they're losing business, we're also losing um, tax revenue news to those cities. Um, so I think it might uh, be beneficial that we consider changing the hours of um, our allowable cannabis operations from eight to ten. Um, and there's a laundry list of, of other reasons why, um, and I'd be happy to go into that. Um, those reasons, if we are interested in exploring this on a um, later agenda. And if there was interest in putting that on a later agenda.
I would be interested in putting that on an agenda, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a yes.
Counselor Reyes. Yeah, I also uh, was part of the committee that um, to select the idea committee individuals, and I just want to thank everyone too who applied. It's just, uh, I'm always amazed to talk to people about their, their uh, experience and, and life experience and what they want to do and, and aspirations. So that was really encouraging how our community works together. Um, I also participated, well, I went to the National Night Out on August first. And um, that is a really, really fun event. Um, I learned a lot and the community there are very um, just, just warm people that welcome everybody, and I just felt so um, I don't know, just really encouraged to continue to support and, and not fight because I want to do that for that community, but continue to like have that awareness that we have that community and, and um, provide what they need so they can have a better uh, so can, they can enjoy their, their area as much as we can enjoy our neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you. So um, um, Council Pratt and I uh, updated the marquees, which was nice to take questions from them and, and hear their concerns, which that was very nice. Uh, today, I, I've tried to be brief with um, standing in for the mayor on the Washington County Coordinate Committee, they really touched on a lot of big topics. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll be brief in some, some focuses. One thing that they highlighted is that Washington County is a powerhouse for economics uh, for, which is the city of Toalton is right in the middle of it. And they're looking to ways to do market approaches for developing trade jobs, um, so they're going to be looking at more plans around that. Um, the airbag earth boundary, uh, that continues to be an issue when they have large companies looking for land minimums. Uh, they typically like to have twelve to twenty options of massive lands of over a hundred to fifty acres. It only showed three available in Oregon, so it doesn't speak well for Oregon in trying to attract big players into, and for jobs. Let's see. The, the tolling. And so they're having financial constraints, and so because of that, they're not going to continue with phase two. Phase two would have consisted of expanding two oh five, adding a single lane. The only project going forward is the Abernathy Bridge. There was a lot of small details, but in brief, those are the two points uh, that it took away from the, from this postponement of the tolling. There was a lot of talk about adjacent cities working together with Washington County. Sherwood has taken a pretty strong approach to developing their business hub, and they're looking forward with other cities to work together simply because, of course, if Sherwood brings the homes, maybe Toalton brings the jobs or vice versa. And so there was a lot of conversations around partnering with uh, the other cities. Uh, they're working with a consulting firm to develop how we can do that. Uh, one concern was that Portland's reputation is impacting the surrounding cities. Um, they had key players show up to Portland, they wanted to take a tour. They didn't want to drive them down Highway five or two oh five because of what they see with the homelessness. Everybody's dealing with homelessness. But it is a concern. Um, so they're working strong to uh, affect Portland's reputation because obviously Portland is a major player in this state, which is affecting all of us on jobs, housing, and so on and so forth. Okay, I think that's all I have for update.
Cheryl, would it be okay if we did the rest of them later so everybody could have a couple minutes? Or we can start a few minutes?
I think you can do either one.
Okay, well, let's just finish up that, Counselor Brooks.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I sent everyone uh, the water emergency preparedness how-to video and related resources toolkit to share with the community. It's amazing how many languages that is um, translated into. There's how-to videos and all kinds of links that can be shared, so please take a look and um, the consortium is something that we um, that we're a part of, that we buy into, and this is part of what we get for what we do, so um, make good use and encourage everybody to look at that. I also met with the um, Arts Advisory Committee, they're working through um, the art proposals for finalists for the Veterans Memorial uh, Plaza. So that's exciting work that's moving forward um, with help from the um, Parks Bond. And finally, today, uh, myself and Council President Pratt went through and looked at our climate action plan preview. There is an opportunity to make comments through, I'll let Counselor Pratt, she probably remembers the numbers better than I do, but for the next couple of weeks, I think, at least. Um, and it's a really amazing document that a lot of energy is put into. I want to especially thank Matty Cheek and Nick Weston Dorf. I'm trying to spell it in my head. Um, there, the enthusiasm that they brought to this project has been in the amount of hours, time, conversations with partners and community members has been really amazing. And there's been a lot of other department people in the city staff that have also dedicated a lot of time and energy. Um, so that's all appreciated, and um, I'm really proud of our council for passing this um, unanimously and for the big, the supportive energy that's come into this project. Thanks.
Can I just say that that'll be on the council work session agenda October the ninth?
And it's three weeks, you have to comment. Thank you, we're close. Okay, so I'm going to skip all the committees that were mentioned, and I'm going to throw my last three together. I had a C four meeting, a C four toll strategy subcommittee meeting, and then R one act, we got to go, that was very cool. We got to go out to um, Hood River, and we got to go the Mitchell Point Tunnel that they've just blasted through and see that, and it's very exciting because that whole um, trail that starts in Troutdale will go all the, there's a mile and a quarter left, and there'll be a trail that will go all the way to the Dows, and it's going to be just great for our region, and it's super cool. And beautiful, of course, because it's out in the gorge. The big um, discussion in all of these, interestingly enough, was um, about, you know, the tolling and there, there are these new nexus projects, they're asking, transportation projects, they're asking for all the cities and counties to what projects they'd like to see funded. The, the overwhelming concern here is a whole, and this came from all three, people from all three counties, and overall lack of trust in ODOT and what they're planning to do with this, and um, there's a feeling that it's just trying to um, divide us, and I'm glad to hear that Counselor Gonzalez said, because that's what I'm hearing on the Clackamas County and from the, the joint um, counties coming together at R one act is everybody wants to kind of stick together as a force, and I really hope that happens. You, with that, let's um, take two minutes real quick and then start the meeting.
Recording stopped.